Open the public hearing on the school district and some school districts safety plan and any subsequent modifications. For those of you who have seen this presentation for multiple years, to give you a little bit of background. First and foremost, the changes in our safety planning all stem from New York State law. It's from the 801A and section 807 New York State law. State government safety planning, emergency and fire drills, the continuity of operations plan, which was added in 2021, for those who may recall, right after our beginning of our COVID experience. And then the remote construction plan, which actually stemmed from that as well, which Dr. Shanahan's office put together in its an appendum to the district safety plan if it ever needed. So again, a little bit more background relative to 2016, where all of this law really stemmed. Beginning as safe legislation, many of you refer to as safe legislation, it covers school safety planning, any guidance, memo isn't thought, guidance for school district on safety, code of conduct, child abuse and educational setting, fingerprint regulations, and school violence prevention and intervention requirements. Subsequently, in 2016, there were a number of statutory amendments that I'll review momentarily. Ultimately, the goal was really to prevent the demise effects of violence incidents in schools in particular. So some of those statutory amendments that we added in 2016 included contacting parents and guardians during the crisis. The second is annual training, which of course we've always had relatively mandated training, but there was a mental health component that was added. And on top of that, the district through our mental health grant also adds on mental health first aid training, amongst some others, that has surfaced through our five-year grant that were right in the middle of Dr. Hado's office. We also added the designation of chief emergency officer and district safety committee, which I get to co-chair with Mr. Rampano and I'm identified as the chief emergency officer. They also required policies and procedures specifically to a consistent language. So we're all familiar with the consistent language within our class around instruction. The same was asked through our safety planning, which is really driven from our secret service and was called the incident command system, or ICS, which I'll go over briefly in a couple of slides. Lastly, twelve drills are conducted and our students simply notice every year in and year out. You have your eight evacuation or fire drills and your four lockdown drills. Changes in 24 and 25, if you remember from last year's presentation, included the requirement to be trauma informed. So you'll see emails and communication going before any students and families, so they're aware of drills before they happen, not necessarily the same date and time, but a week before, so they can talk to their students if they are anxious or nervous about those experiences. So similar to the district plan, each building is also required. Now, we're not approving that through the board per se, I'll go over why here again. But state regulations also require building-level emergency response teams, which each building of course has. And the roles that play, of course, are here, our teachers, administrators, parents, school safety personnel, et cetera. And a big thank you to our collaborators in the community, Sheriff's Police, Emergency Management, and Sheriff's Fire have all been a huge benefit to us and show up at all of our meetings and have supported since day one. And I also say something about the Rumbosys and Mr. Pizala, and we both met in the past as well. They really play a very supportive and helping hand to our buildings to do things like tabletops, so they can run through activities and what may occur, since this is not something you experience every day nor do you want to. But in order to be prepared, we do tabletop activities and I can't thank those people enough for being there for this. I referred momentarily ago to the ICS with increment consent command system. So those people that you see, those teachers, administrators, that all play a specific role in each building if an event were to ever happen. What you see on the right are binders that each of our buildings have, so that, and again, you know, practice day in and day out, so if by chance something were to happen and you're identified as the planning coordinator or the incident commander, which is typically our building principal, or an information officer, for example, you can open your binder and see all of your roles and responsibilities right there, so when the time comes, you don't have to remember all of that and it's not muscle. And again, each of our buildings has the same binders and you'll see, I don't know if you've seen them do an exit to a fire drill or evacuation or dragon dive in them. And that bag has all those binders in it and other information supporting. You'll also see the teachers carrying a red folder. And that red folder has information about the kids that they can do the access, because we can't always get to our computers to dig in without passing them through fantastic. We also bring this with copies just in case you need access to them. So just some real quick summary here about the district plan versus the performance response plans. But again, we're recording the district safety plan, that's what was on our website. The district-wide safety team, which some of you are a part of, create and implement update district-wide safety plan. The building-level emergency response team, consider that information and designate emergency response teams both pre and post incident, and then also develop their building-level plans. And as you can imagine, those building-level plans are confidential, because those include very specific information of what we would do in a crisis. And that's not information we want the community to know or someone who might want to do harm, who the school might want to know and know what our plans are if an event were to happen. So here's just a summary of what each hold. Again, the district-wide safety plan has just some very general comprehensive information, broad concept. Our connection with our school resource officer and that contractor, Sheriff's Police, for example, is in there. District policies, overarching guidance to things like DASA and our code of conduct are referenced in there. And again, the board adopts that following a comment period, which I'll review my second question. And again, it's posted down on our website. In terms of the building level, very detailed procedures, how individuals respond to the building, that again, an instant command system as well as what. Again, very specific details on evacuations and again, great confidentiality. So our district plan has six sections to it as well as two appendices. The district plan, for those of you who have this electronically, I've linked here, though it is on our website as well. The six sections you see here, section four includes that SRO agreement I referenced momentarily ago. And then the two appendices I talked about before in 2021, 23 are hyperlinked at the end. When you open them, you'll notice that those do not have dates, because they've been developed and they do not need to be updated on an annual basis. So in terms of this year, there are actually three changes and I'll share why here in a second, but there's one major update and one significant change. Last year, there were five. We had, again, I mentioned this already, but our drills required to be trauma-informed. So again, practice, not prepare, not to scare. And the communication, the emails go out to the parents here and our students, you'll see those emails going out ahead of time. Full-scale exercises ever used, we have a number of requirements, we have not gone that route. Again, it could be a full-scale exercise with APD or FBI or have you. They have some very specific requirements around that, including not doing anything when students are in school. I'm gonna skip this one for a second and come back. Inclusion of transportation on our safety committee, I'll tell you how to do this last year. We already had our transportation involved, though we added our transportation coordinator, Renee Corraig, to the committee for her incident. And then updates on floor plans and area maps. And if you look at our plans now, they're extremely concise and I want to thank Mrs. Flanagan before she left and Mr. Rampano's office, because they did a great job of taking those floor plans of all of our buildings and really folding in, you can, there's a key at the bottom, you can see where every camera, every fire extinguisher, every APD machine is on there. So if anyone ever come in that's not familiar with their buildings, they know exactly where to go, which I think is a benefit regardless of our, you know, if we ever experienced that. The fifth, and I'll go back to this now, was adding a threat assessment. I mentioned at the time, we had a committee working on this for about a year and a half. We did finalize that and I'll just share briefly our process. I know overall this, and I apologize, it's kind of small as I pull it up. But essentially, this is a flow chart of a threat assessment process. So essentially, if there were ever a threat in our buildings, we first, our administrators and our PPS staff first take a look at what's going on. And the SRO is involved as the, if the threat is transient or is a student is just really maybe in some trouble personally, there's one flow you would follow. If they look like they are looking to fight or do something dangerous in school, we would follow a different path. And within that, there's an assessment, a type of link, because I will open a ball of them and FAQ for administrators. We did a training early this year, this summer I should say. And in September, we'll be doing a training with each specific predecessor team, which is going to be linked to our instructional support team. Is everyone familiar with ISD, instructional support team? So those are those instructional teams within our buildings that talk about kids and link whether their behavioral needs or academic needs. For those behavioral needs, this would be a connection to that opposed to creating a whole new community team. That team will be looking at threats in addition to just quote-unquote behaviors. Any questions on that? Okay, so for 25, 26, yes?
I'm just kind of curious, I'm just looking at this, like, if you guys, I mean, it's sort of like different between, between a serious versus very serious, it's a little ambiguous.
It is on there, so that flow chart is a bit ambiguous. So in the bottom left, and I'm actually welcome to open it actually, there is a threat assessment process. And it all chunks up and that flow chart actually tells you when to go to step one, when to go to step two, when to go to step three, when to go to step four, when to go to step five. So as you go through that, the PPS staff with our administrators and school resource officer or APD work together to determine whether or not it was a significant enough threat to do an assessment or if it's something that's being addressed through whatever intervention make or when they're building-based or something from APD. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it just seems like, and I'm assuming it's in compliance with the state law as far as like it's only a serious threat and you don't have the safety plan in it.
Right.
But if it's very serious, we do.
That's right, that's right. And some may be self-harm versus external harm as well, right? So that self-harm may be more of the Columbia scale and assessing whether or not that student is a danger themselves and we assess it support in a very different way than if we were, you know, they were mad at the threat.
Yeah.
The other, hold your sheets, this is a really significant change here. So within the state emergency response plan, a lot of many of you've been in our schools, you see these on the back of doors, right? So we have a process to do a shelter in place, a holding place, evacuation, lockout and lockdown, right? We do the drills for some of them. This last year, the state wanted us to change the title of this column from lockout to secure lockout. So that was one of our changes this year. So that one's not too hard to start. Lastly, and this is more of an internal change than it is a requirement of the law. So when we do an evacuation, one of the concerns when you do, when you have to do an evacuation, not that one won't want to be in position to do that, but if you have to evacuate to an off-site location first. And all of our buildings have an off-site location as well as a backup, in case that site's not available. Then what happens is we would then have to reunify students with their caregivers, their families, parents and guardians, right? So how do you do that in a consistent, safe and sort of well-organized fashion? At this point, many schools don't have that ability, so we went to a program that is driven by an old, actual horrible circumstance and a foundation that was created out of a circumstance called I love you guys. And within their programs and guidance, they have what's called a standard reunification model. And what it does is it standardizes procedures, so if you go off-site, there's a space to reunify parents with kids, there's a space for parents to go and fill out a card, so you're doing something and as we all know, if you're doing something, you kind of slow down a little bit. There's a place for students to get mental health treatment, there's a space to, they have students sort of collected together, there's a space for the school resource officer. So it guides us in a process and again, safe procedures and sort of streamlined approach to reunifying students with parents if it's ever needed. I did link our plan here, I will not go through the whole thing, but this is our plan I put together with our administrators this summer. We're in the final steps of finalizing, actually a visual for those who need to see it as much as understand it. So in this plan, it goes from, you know, the general of the objective and what's, which I've shared a bit here, down to what that reunification staging looks like, so what does the space look like, what do all the spaces look like? And how does filling out the card occur and how does the whole process happen? So who's the runner from the table to finding a student and bringing them back? Who's checking IDs? Who is working with a parent if they forgot their wallet, I stress, because they don't have their ID with them and how to manage them? That's all within here. Does this make sense? Any questions on this? So not really much left here, so this really brings us almost to the end. So the district safety plan was on our website back at the end of June. So the thirty-day comment period actually ended early this week on July 31st. Our job is to make sure you have the access to that safety plan, which is provided to the community for a public comment period for approval prior to September 1st, which is the requirement. And then we have to submit to New York State by October, and this is an annual event. So this will be on your agenda for August 19th for approval, which will be before that date. Any other questions on any of this? Then I'd like to close the close the public hearing on our district safety plan. Other questions? That's it, let's hear. Anything else?
To call the public meeting in order, and to do the question.
Students of the United States of America, consider Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in Israel, liberty and justice for all.
So do we have any necessary information to speak?
No.
And no written voice on this? Then I'd like to move on to the report of the board and committees. The first thing that I wanted to discuss is our board building visits. You were looking to conduct building visits for all four buildings on campus 28, starting at 4:00 PM. Did everybody here get a chance to consider if it would be available? And we usually start right at 1:00 PM, so if you're ready to.
I don't know yet, I'll let you decide. Come on that. If we do need any, APD will provide it. Unless you have your own card that you prefer.
Then we'll move on to any committee reports. Do anybody have any reports that met?
Yeah, the audit committee met a couple of weeks ago for our external audit with Dr. Malachi. We met with them on the 24th of July to go over any questions, any concerns we have, which there's certainly weren't that many. The auditors are here already this week for the next couple of weeks doing their work. And then the audit committee will meet again at the end of the month to review the draft reports and then there'll be a board presentation September 2nd.
I did have, I wanted to report that I signed a one-year ban to cover the cost for phase two of our capital spending project. And one committee report that I had was that our policy committee met on July 17th. We discussed the changes to policy 7316, which we're going to discuss in detail tonight. I'm supporting the report. That covers the distraction-free schools updates. And representing our first free policy 5685 for maximum temperature for school buildings and the facilities, and that's in tonight's agenda for the board. And Miss Malco, what do you have to report for us?
So I would be training about two weeks ago, just to talk more about our position on this. This is now, and we still have this for the board. So out of all the things we covered, I wanted to add like these three points about the quality of our board members and really kind of my position on what you guys, along with separating the board's power versus like admin and everything like that. So we did an activity where two different policies, there's different rules that schools have and got to kind of play, I guess, a game of which sort of, that was like admin job or board to be or field or then state or whatever. So that was very helpful, because I've already made my ignorance about the board and that, so learning about that was very helpful. And I would look forward to implementing that when talking to my peers, talking to different students. And speaking to students, I really wanted to ensure during that meeting that we talked about diversity among our students and acknowledging that we have been by each of two kids and two children are the same. So we always try to, or at least what I'm gonna try to do, is remove my own bias and make sure I'm speaking for not only myself, but the school board and kind of removing myself from that and making sure, making sure that I'm talking for all different kinds of students and not just my peers. So that was very helpful in acknowledging that. I have my own preferences and whatnot, but I want to make sure I know that doesn't get in the way of what I'm trying to do. All my peers, so. I think the relevant and making sure that I'm reaching all the types of students as well. So yeah, not just the high schoolers, but middle schoolers, elementary schoolers, people in different clubs and again, not just one group of people, it's that we need to hire amazing students here, so I really want to add.
Any other reports? Move on to the smart phone support.
Thanks. The first one that I have here for tonight, welcome Mr. Galado back to the podium. Talk about the policy you adopted last Friday and the plan for implementing the policy of distraction-free schools.
So I will just, first and foremost, I'll share what distraction-free schools this is not. Unfortunately, it's not moving some of the really cool trucks outside of our some of our elementary buildings. We've got some of the little kids like Garfield the cat wanting to check out those, though our really savvy teachers are folding really cool trucks into their literacy lessons and suddenly it's super exciting. So it's not that, it's also not moving your kids' cell phones from their hands to the dinner table and putting them in the middle of that pile, though we do have the ability to do that now. We can use, so the schools do it, so needless to say, that's not what it's not. I'll tell you what it is. And what it is, it's New York State law that says that there will be no unsanctioned use of smartphones or other internet-enabled personal device. And that's an important topic to share, because it really is not just smartphones. It could be smart watches, smart purses, what have you, they're all internet-enabled and internet-connected. Though cell phones are certainly the most popular item we're talking about. But having said that, this would include those devices on school grounds, which is anywhere on the grounds of, and I'll go through these definitions in a moment, for the entire school day. And we talked in our committee about, essentially is bell-to-bell. So as soon as that first bell rings, home room, all the way to the last bell of last period. Could the students check their phones beforehand and afterwards before they go home with doctor appointments, lessons, changes in practices, et cetera, of course. And that would be an important time to do that. But during the instructional day, even if it's lunch or a break or a free period, they're supposed to be off in a way. So what it does also allow us to do is discuss at our committee level how to store those and I'll share a bit about where we can do that. Thirdly, it talks about making sure that we notify parents in writing of our communication methods between students and parents when needed, because those situations certainly are going to occur and always have, right? In addition to that, we must consult students, parents and teachers, so those are stakeholders, if you will, in development of policy and the plan. And lastly, we're required to publish an annual report on any enforcement of the policy as needed. So essentially, if this plan were required, and I'll talk about that more depth in a moment as well. So some of those key definitions that we're working on, again, internet-enabled devices, they include cell phones, but not just cell phones. They can include a number of things that are internet-enabled and internet-connected. Smart watches are a big one, students' own laptops, students' tablets, those all fit into this category. What is not included are non-internet-enabled devices and then of course, internet-enabled devices that are provided by the school district for the purposes of construction. The school day, as I shared before, is from bell-to-bell, so the starting instructional day to the end and includes all the periods in between, regardless whether it's a typical instructional period or a recess or a lunch or a study hall, et cetera. Lastly, school grounds means anywhere within the building or structure or the athletic facility or the fields and spaces around our building. Essentially, the property one. So a little bit about district policy, and I know you just talked about that approval on August 1st. That was the requirement, was to approve it by August 1st and then also consult with local stakeholders. I will share, we got a fantastic group, I want to thank that group, because we had about twenty-five people involved, including parents, students of all different middle school and high school levels, parents from K to 12, our building administrators from each building, we had two district office representatives, again, five teachers from all of our different buildings, we had a PPS staff. Due to the discussion around mental health, to ensure we addressed some of those topics. And then of course, we had one of our coworkers here, so thank you for joining. So this was, and I want to thank that group, because it was really important to hear their input and hear their insights from all different lenses. And frankly, I think it's a important form of staff ownership and a plan that we're putting together as a team. However, the stakeholders didn't stop there and I'll add on to that in a moment as well. But one of the other requirements in the policy before I go there is that it must be made accessible on the website and also accessible to the twelve most commonly spoken English languages, particularly in common request. And that is on our website and our website has links to that and also a translator, APD or APD cases that come up that maybe aren't developed on the website. So as I shared before, we wanted to get community input beyond the twenty-five members on the committee. So having said that, we put together a comment period and put the plan out to the community and allowed for Google responses that were stored into a Google form and then we're able to review with our committee. And putting it out for that week, we received eighty-two responses, the vast majority being from middle school, high school, middle school, high school parents in particular. I will say, we asked a lot of questions about what they felt about the policy and the plan, but one general question we asked is how do you feel about it? To gauge sort of the response and the motives sort of side of all of this, because it has been controversial in some circles. So I will share that seventy percent shared positive support around it, whereas thirty percent did share some concerns. But I will say that most of those concerns were specific to their individual cases, their individual children, for the most part. There were some that were just generally concerned about limiting the access to the phone, but most were specific cases that I know based on the plan will be addressed to those particular families. So feedback in those areas were fully focused, the helpful feedback that we got was really focused around storage, consequences and communication. And those were all pieces that we did want input on. And in our third meeting, we did discuss that feedback and implemented some changes to the plan. So where did we land is the question. So what you'll notice is on our website, there it is. On our, in our website, under students and parents, we have distraction-free schools summary here. That includes, and a big thank you to Laura Susenko who helped put this all together. It's a lot better looking than I could have made, so it's very really well organized. Within it, you'll see the board hyperlink to board policy, though it's of course within the same site through board docs that all of our policies have, but this is a hyperlink just to provide easy access for parents who have questions in this particular year. It has the plan linked to it as well as a quick overview. It has an FAQ document for those who are interested in just going quickly to see what are some of the most common questions and what are those answers to my questions. It'll have the presentation attached to it. It'll have input, the community input, as well as the committee timeline. And I'll share that a few weeks later on in your presentation.
Like that?
Yeah.
Could you open that quickly again, or is it all that?
Yeah, the community input is just a description of the input, it's not the actual input.
Yeah, it's a description tab, right?
Yeah. And then if you just click on the pluses, you'll see the plan.
PDFs here.
Yeah, the PDF is there, but it's also typed into the website so that it can be translated into different languages if needed.
Right, because the link one large translate has to be directly on the webpage. Any other questions? Okay. Alright, so a quick summary, similar to what you saw in there, a quick summary. In terms of device storage, our middle school and high school, at this point, our students will be required to turn them off and store them in their locker throughout the school day. And again, it's from bell-to-bell. They'll have access to it before the first bell, they'll have access after, but during the school day, it will need to be turned off and in their locker. At the elementary level, they should be turned off also and stored in the students' backpacks, but those backpacks should be stored in either cubbies or lockers, depending on which classroom setting they have. At the elementary level in particular, we are strongly recommending in the plan to just have kids do it. So that's what's in the summary, what's in the plan for device storage. The other component, and I share this briefly ago, is exceptions, is another. The other component, and I share this briefly ago, is exceptions, is another section of the plan. There are six exceptions that the law allows for. Those revolve primarily around authorization for the administrator, which we would take care of internally. Instances for his management of students' healthcare, which again, we take care of with families. But what I'll say is we determine it's a process around some of the more, the items that really require some feedback and some assessment. And those are around our healthcare, translation, and if this child might be a caregiver. And the caregiver, that caregiver status really has a, has a legal attachment to it. The others are items that we can handle more in-house. So if there's a family emergency or if the administrator would allow, so for example, a different laptop to be used than the school's assigned laptop, then those are things that we handle internally. If there's a request for an exception, that request will be handled for items, the three that I talked about. Healthcare, translation, and if there's a student period. So our, what we did is we ended up creating a form to, again, if there's an exception request to be handled by our dis, our building main offices, that family will put in a request for one of the three I just discussed. And then below, they would follow the process to fill out the necessary information around their request. And that request will be handled through a process, and I'll initiate that process here in section nine. So the process is almost more important. And that is, depending on what, it's not scrolling down. If there's a medical need, the initial review will be by the building principal as well as the medical director. And then we would provide some additional medical information, possibly medical notes or additional information. And that decision would then be made and communicated to the family. Similar to that for translation, if reviewed by a building principal, consultation would be had with our PNL teachers. Because each case might be different and we may already have translation as part of software on their computer. So then parents just may not know that. So then it's a matter of consulting with PNL, looking at each individual case, and again, the decision and plan will be communicated to the family. If it is a caregiver responsibility, the building principal would, again, review them on case by case, consult with our PPS staff, our school counselors, social workers and psychologists. And then additional documentation may be requested depending on what, what specific requests they have. So are they specifically, do they have a, do they have a child themselves? Are they a caregiver to someone who might require their, their care on a consistent basis, so they need as a legal caregiver? Or is someone help, is their health in distress and they're needing as a specific person to take care of them? So down below, there's actually more, I won't go into all of this, but the possible scenarios, any additional required documentation that may exist, as well as says usage parameters that should be applied, sort of the tiered process for caregiver exceptions. And then whose role is what between our administration, medical director, PPS and students and parents in each of their classes. So that is our process around exceptions. Processes always is important for us to be consistent and also address the role. Violations. So violations, so and I'll go into each building specifically here in a moment. But essentially, the law talks about the fact that you cannot suspend a child solely for the use of a cell phone. And you'll see that you don't. However, there may be levels in which a student might be suspended, but it won't be because of use of a cell phone. It would potentially be for the use of a machine. So having said that, as we're handling discipline within our buildings, at the end of the year, we are required, based on this law, also to provide a report at the end of the year on any infractions, including non-identifiable, non-identifiable demographic data to identify the disparities among different groups of students based on the use of cell phones and violations or consequences provided. So in terms of what happens at each building level, our middle and high school, now this is pretty consistent. Middle school, and I'll just say this, is our elementary school, you'll see this in all of our practices. Our elementary school, middle school aren't going to experience a great deal of changes after a year. Most of what I'm talking about and what I'm about to finish talking about is something already in place at the elementary middle school. So all of our students, K to really nine, will be familiar with this. Because our ninth graders are coming from middle school, they haven't experienced anything different than that in high school. However, there are going to be some changes for our 10th, 11th and 12th graders. Because this is a change in culture and experience. However, the violations that will occur, so if there's a first offense, I will say, of course, our teachers will provide a lot of instruction and guidance and support for the opening days. Reminders and, because it is a change for some students. But the first formal offense, it will be confiscated and returned to the student at the end of the day. The second offense, that will be, the phone will then be consecrated, I'm sorry, confiscated and returned to the student at the end of the day only upon parent request. So it has to be that parent guardian contacted. In addition, a detention will be provided. On a third offense, a very similar process will be followed, but there will be two detentions. So you see the progressive discipline going on. A fourth offense, they'll be confiscated and returned only to the parent and guardian. At this point, we're talking about some insubordination. So there will be an in-school suspension assigned. If there is refusal to comply at all with administrators, that really has nothing to do with use of a cell phone. Really is insubordination or possibly potentially gross insubordination for not listening to the administrator or the teacher. In that case, we will follow the code of conduct in managing that as we would for any case grounds insubordination or gross insubordination. Depending on every case can be slightly different. So they'll handle that similarly to they would how they would any other case. At the elementary level, again, reminders will be provided, but for the most part, we haven't, in talking with our administrators, we haven't had a problem in this, in this end of the, of our world, our little ones. However, the process that's currently in place that may continue is, of course, a reminder for those students who maybe don't understand it the first time. But after that, a first formal offense will again be a verbal warning to return the device back to the back room. And or a cubby or locker will happen. Second offense, it will be confiscated and returned to the student at the end of the day and upon parent and guardian request. So the communication will be to the parent at that point. The third offense, it will be confiscated and returned only to the parent and guardian. And the student will have to engage in reflective activity, so that's that growth mindset. So how do I, what do I learn from this and what should I do differently moving forward? And similarly to the middle school and high school, if they're simply just not responding to the administrator, we're looking at insubordination, potential gross insubordination in our code of conduct. And again, talking to our administrators, this is just frankly never happened. So we're hoping it doesn't happen, but it is part of our process that in every. So in terms of how our students and parents and guardians are going to get in contact with each other, getting in contact with each other when it's needed. So similar to how it's been for a long time, I don't, for me, but my parents called the main office and got the over. They would either have that message sent to me or they'd have me come down to the main office to talk with them directly if there was something that's sensitive or problematic. That will be the plan in terms of students and parents, well, the parents calling the main office and informing students. Parents, of course, may also drop off written notes, as I know many of us do. They may week in, week out for something that's going on. In many cases, we have email teachers, if it's something we want to talk to the teacher about. In terms of the notification, the district on our end will notify parents of this communication protocol. Obviously, here tonight, we're talking about it. This will also go out to communication. Our building administrators already then follow up with communication as well as opening day plans, and I'll go over that in just a few slides. The district is still exploring other options for messaging applications. There is no secure messaging within our current platform, but we are continuing to investigate that, see what might be potential in the future if we need it. Lastly, in terms of our students, they, of course, may use the phone in main office, the attendance office, the nurses' office, student services office. Particularly if they're working with a counselor or a medical professional, something that's personal in that moment and you need to call someone safe, their parent or guardian. And of course, in some cases, it may be approved by the teacher and the classroom as well, depending on the time. So one of the other important items is really getting us ready for the school year, right? So all of this is for your plan, the procedures, the policies, they're all in place. But then how do we implement? How do we roll that out? Training for our students as well as our, our teachers and faculty and staff and all our educators is important to make sure this all rolls out properly. So in terms of the students, there will be assemblies, interclassroom activities that will be going on, I can say, specific to the high school. They have litany of, of things they'll be doing on those opening days for students to get them ready. Whether they have trouble with their locker, or they have trouble using those combo locks that they used to in middle school, or they just don't understand what the applications are. We, of course, want to set people up for success. So on opening days, there will be a lot of discussion, a lot of training, and those in the, for really the open, that home base, home time, before kids get released to the first period, they're going to use an extended home, home to go through all of this with them. They have a slideshow ready to go and practice ready to go and some Q and A ready to go. And they're doing a great job getting ready for the beginning of this. In addition, the students will see posters, reminders throughout the buildings. And again, as I shared, they'll be instructed on using those combo locks and their lockers as. For our educators, that will occur on our staff development days opening up. Our administrators and Dr. Shanahan's got a long list of good stuff they'll be learning. Within the, within the building level, they'll have their faculty meetings and they'll also be sharing a different presentation with them that geared more towards our educators. And really that focuses on not just how to implement, what is the, what's the role of the teacher in supporting this and working with our administration, but also how do we model proper behavior in using cell phones? Because we shouldn't be using cell phones, and it's something that is already in effect, our handbook and our employee handbook is not using cell phones during instructional time. So this is really just a gentle reminder to model that good behavior for our students. Our adults, of course, still have access to their cell phones by today, but they should use those professionally at times away from their instructional time with the students. So family communication, we've already gone through a few of these. But as, as was already shared, the board adopted the policy on August 1st. It is already available online in board docs as well as on that website that I shared. The distraction free schools webpage is, of course, up and running as we saw. I encourage you to go through and play around with some of the more pluses I might open in the section since we've been all shared about. There's a lot more on there, a lot of really helpful information. I encourage you to read that FAQ document. I think that was really helpful as a dad. I thought that was helpful just to go through it when I put back that on and I took off my administrative hat. So the other is, as I shared earlier, on the website, there's translation of those policy, the policy and the twelve most common as well as our plan. As Mr. Canella pointed out, you have to open that, that would be translated in the website as opposed to on the PDF link. All staff, all families, staff and students will receive information about the policy prior to the school year. I know Mr. Canella has a planned communication that will be going out. And all of our building administrators has, have a follow-up communication that will be going out that's a little more specific to their buildings. And they'll also be following up in the, in the opening days and opening weeks of the school year as well, particularly at our high school. The other change is for, not only should we, are we required to inform families on a annual basis, but also those who register with the school district. So we have a central registration document and a flyer to include with our central registration packet for new families. So they know what the communication protocol is, expectations and policy and plan is around distraction free schools. Lastly, we are continuing to look, as we are looking at the communication option, the informational programming, potentially. And some of you may have attended this, our family support center last year did screen study and how that works. So we're looking into informational program for families around this, around distraction free schools and what the benefits are for our students. Academic, they would also look at that. So more to come on that. As I said, there's an FAQ document, I already shall want to pull this up because that's really just hyperlinked to the website. Just real quick, the last two slides, this was the timeline leading up to today. So as I shared, early in May was when the guidance started to come out. Once we had some helpful guidance, we immediately started the process to opening up our committee membership. Once we identified the committee membership on May 28th, we realized we had a lot of interest. So we actually ended up doing a randomized list of, of numbers and assigning them to people on a spreadsheet and picking, just picking who came up first. So those names were identified and our first committee met on June 4th. We then met on June 11th at our second committee. And as I shared earlier, we wanted to get together a feedback survey from the community to get more voice beyond just the 25. So that feedback survey was posted on June 13th. We also had the draft plan, FAQ and the website created, which helps with that feedback. So the committees could really read some robust information from our committee. As you can tell, it did a lot of work just to meet. On June 20th, that feedback form closed, that feedback form closed. And on June 24th, we had our third meeting, which looked at that feedback and made changes and updates to the plan. Particularly around this decision of storage, consequence and parent communication. July 8th, the policy draft with the policy review committee was finalized. That was then shared with committee with this study actually on July 10th. And then during our administrative retreat, if you notice, the policy committee met on the last day of retreat. So of course, on the last day of retreat, we had a lot of good conversation in the afternoon about distraction free schools. So our committee met in the morning and our administrators met in the afternoon at retreat on our last day and discussed really the rollout, and I'll share that in our last slide. August 1st, of course, we approved the policy and tonight we got the presentation. So moving forward, what's coming next? Well, our administrative retreat, as I shared, met. They went through the policy, the plan, the FAQ document, the timeline, they reviewed all the information. And their job was to actually create an addendum to the plan. So there's the plan of what to do. Now, what's this going to look like in your buildings? And I've already shared some of them already, because I don't remember what we get. But their goal really was to have a smooth transition and strong communication to start the school year. So what they did is they did a task analysis of where they get, so what are the specific needs at the elementary, middle and high? And how are they going to roll that out? How are they going to address communication with families, with students and with our faculty and staff as we start the school year? Again, I've already shared some of this already. Our work focus primarily on high school because that's really where the significant changes. Our elementary and middle school students do not really experience much of a change except for the fact that this is a formal plan as opposed to one we manage now. So and I already, already shared information about the high school, so I won't go back into that again. But knowing that this is, these are the next steps in the start of the school year, are there any questions about next steps or anything I shared already?
I just had a quick question for those that get an exception. How is it, say there's a sub that comes in that day, is there some sort of master list that all of these subs will be aware of so that they're not making a certain student feel uncomfortable and have to explain why they have their phone? How do we manage that?
So that's a good question. So I, in talking with, I met with, actually, Ms. Sisenko and I met with Mr. Pigeon, Ms. Kibler and Mr. Kapten just last week to go over their rollout plan. And one of the things they talked about was knowing it. So they're meeting with the nurses around how they're planning that, they're meeting with the email teachers around how that piece is going to work. And they're meeting with, what's the third piece of this? Oh, the PPS staff, around the caregiver staff. So in terms of those, what they talked about was the teacher to make sure that they have it in their sub plans. So that the sub comes in, knows that there's a combination similar to if a student had an IDU report. And frankly, if a student has an IDU report before and it's also a request there, this would not be something that necessarily goes to CSE. The CSE talks about information for implementation of accommodations and modification, but it still requires input from the medical director and the medical professional in the family. So it will still come back in this process even if it's covered for ID. But it should be in their sub plans, yes, just like any other competition.
Yeah, and if an exception is granted, it doesn't necessarily mean that the student will have the phone on them for the entire day. It could mean they have access to it at a point during the day or they're allowed to use it once or twice throughout the day to check glucose levels or something before an active launch. It won't necessarily be unfettered access that they have it on them and, you know, they're walking down the hall with their AirPods or. So that'll, that'll be certainly a different world for us to navigate the exceptions. But I feel comfortable that we put together a streamlined approach, knowing that those exceptions can come from multiple angles. From the CSE table to PPS staff, the principal or even a medical request.
Any other questions? Well, thanks again for having me. This is the end of my presentations this season.
Well, I just wanted to give Mike a note of thanks. You know, the timeline started in May, but the date that's not on there is the day that Mike was in my office. And I said, I need you to run a committee to get a plan together for the distraction free school.
I said, thank you.
And Mike didn't bat an eye, or well, he batted his eyes, but he didn't say it worked. So I do, I am thankful for him, but I said to him at that time, I said, you run a great committee and I know it'll result in a great plan. And I need you to do this for us. And he jumped right in with the help of Lori Sisenko and they led a really good process and I'm thankful. So good job and thank you. And certainly, we're gearing up for implementation in a month here and will keep an eye on implementation and give you updates as needed or as appropriate. So I'd also like to then move on to more meeting topics. So as we've done in the past, I sent you a list of tentative topics for superintendent's reports. I always like to use this. I always like to use this as an opportunity just to revisit our board protocol, because everybody has the opportunity to request that a topic be placed on the agenda for presentation or discussion. Typically, we ask that you do that through the board president and vice president prior to our agenda-setting meeting, which is the Thursday before each board meeting. But certainly, it doesn't mean we can't entertain any ideas now after you've already looked at four topics, but this isn't a one-and-done. This is an ongoing process, since we have a board meeting conference call Thursday before every meeting. So I'm happy to entertain any suggestions, ideas, or just keep in the back of your mind that you have the opportunity to do that as we move throughout the year. So I lost, sorry, I didn't get it. No. Okay. So that is the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mike, again, and for all of the...
Wonderful, thank you. Then I am going to need a motion to approve the business.
Make a motion for consent item one.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Wonderful, then, is there anything to follow up with? Mike will need a motion to adjourn. You can all say aye.
Aye. I've ever been.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone.